Call to order, the Lake Mills City Council meeting for January 19th, 2016. Please join me for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Misty, could you call a roll, please?
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Scharr?
Here.
Mr. Krikovich?
Here.
And Councilmember Grundin and Student Representative Mr. Knippel both informed me they'd be absent from this evening's meeting.
Very well. Corrections and our approval of City Council minutes of January 5th, 2016. Do we have a motion of approval?
Motion approved.
And do we have a second, please?
Second.
Misty, would you call the vote, please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Krikovich?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Item four, correspondence. We'll start with Mrs. Fritsch.
Nothing significant since the last meeting. Just wanted to mention that my understanding is that there was a pretty good turnout at the spaghetti dinner. And so that was good. And let's see, I've had, I did have one constituent talk to me about the fire department. So that's something I'll just talk with Steve about. It's not something that we have to bring up tonight.
Very well. Steve?
Couple of emails, I think we all got, bike lanes and bicycles. Other than that, quiet.
Mike?
Yeah, just a couple of emails about the trees and a phone call about the trees.
I had the same, so. Nothing else. We'll go ahead and close correspondence. Misty, would you read item five, please?
Questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda, unless the item is the subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided.
And we have any public comments? Please come to the podium. State your name and address and please sign in.
My name is Janet Piles. I live at 224 Lake Shore Drive. I'm here tonight representing over 446 concerned citizens of Lake Mills and the surrounding area. If you have seen the hearts on South Main Street, you have seen our work. Main Street Trees Facebook page provides a place for people to discuss what will happen during the reconstruction of State Highway 89. We've placed hearts on trees so anyone who travels on South Main Street is aware of how many trees are scheduled for removal during this project. In the two months that this Facebook page has been in place, nearly 450 people have expressed dismay at losing these trees. We want to keep healthy, mature trees in place along South Main Street. As you know, the benefits trees provide are many. Trees reduce traffic noise, raise property values, help control water runoff, improve air quality, cool streets and homes in the summer, increase business traffic, and provide wildlife habitat. The mature trees lining South Main contribute to the charm and ambiance of our city, a lovely community with a thriving downtown. We can only begin to realize how difficult it is for you to plan and execute a major construction project, taking into account the requirements which come along with federal and state funding. We appreciate your hours and hours of work. What we're asking is that the Lake Mills Council hold a citywide forum on this issue. The impact of losing these trees is citywide. We have questions, you have answers. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Please step forward if you... If you want to address the council, you can address the council at this time. No. It's public comment.
Anything that's on the agenda tonight. Right?
Actually, we have a public hearing.
Yeah. Is it dealing with the public hearing or...
There is a public hearing.
Yeah, then that's separate.
Anyone else want to address the council that's on an item that is not on the public hearing? If not, we'll close public comments. Go into the item six, City Manager's Report. Steve?
I provided you with a letter from the Main Street Program. And they talked about the John McGivern pre-party, which is scheduled for Monday, January 24th, in the community room at 6:30. And they asked for the city to contribute to lending the chairs at $116.66. We received a letter from the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources from Jeff Ackerman regarding the remedial design report approval for the CPN Corporation and Contankerous And then there was a letter from a concerned citizen regarding shoveling sidewalks. On the website, there was the check register, the PD report, the letter from the DNR regarding the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Program, and then a letter from a citizen regarding the Milpon Channel. There was also some questions about the goat farm. Goat Farm is at the corner of Mansfield Road and Harvey Road. It's in the northwest quadrant there. It was discussed having 9,000 goats on that site there. It went for a conditional use permit before the town of Astelin. And they were working on a route in and out for all the semi trucks because they're not raising any of their own feed, they're trucking it all in. And so they were proposing to have Harvey Road come in from V. But there was a certain amount of that road, that city, and I said that's not designated a truck route. And so they wouldn't be encouraged to use that route unless they paid to upgrade the road to a truck standard. And even then, I don't know if we would do it, but that was the suggestion. There was a, the shortest route in is Mansfield Road from Highway Q. There are some issues with the intersection there. But I believe that the intersection, it's probably cheaper to redesign the intersection than it is to rebuild that portion of the city road on Harvey. But they were going to work on that and get back to us. I've been working pretty substantially on two large economic development projects with Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. This has taken a substantial amount of time and effort. And we've also started the Calvers Development Agreement. We're still working on the Verizon Cell Tower. They sent some plans to us, we made some comments, and they were moving forward with that. We've also been working on redesigning or designing the special events permit. Received all the comments from all the departments, the Chamber and the Main Street Program. It's been spending a lot of time doing the street maintenance analysis and developing the data from that. The Elm Street Project is going out for bid. And so is the dam. Dam should be bid out, we should have those bids back in second meeting of February, first meeting of March.
When is that project slated to start right now?
The dam?
Yeah.
As soon in the spring as, as soon in the spring as they can get working.
Okay. Good.
Same with the Elm Street Project.
Okay.
They're both on about the same time, bid timeline, and we want to get the sewer started as soon as you can start digging in the ground in the spring, and then the water shortly thereafter, and then the pavement.
And as far as the goat farm, our only interest in that is the highway access?
Would be the roadway access.
Okay.
I'm sure that there's more interest than that, but our only legislative action would be related to the road.
Okay. And that would only be a short section by, on the east end of town there?
Yes, it starts at V and then runs the full length of the Brookstone subdivision.
Okay.
And it's only one side of the street.
Why would it only be one side of the street?
The only, when we did that project, we annexed to the middle of the roadway.
Oh.
So the other half is the town of Astelin.
I get it.
So we, when we do that project, we have to do a shared project. That's why they didn't do that portion yet.
Okay, thanks.
So, couple of letters in here. The one about the snow on the Main Street. Can you at least put a little information out there, what those business owners are required to do?
It's similar to everybody in the city. They're required to shovel their snow, but if they don't, you go through the same process that everybody else goes through. So first, someone has to complain. We don't have snow police.
Right.
So if someone complains and turns it in, it goes to, Rob gets, he then notifies them. They have a certain amount of time, you have a certain amount of time after the snowstorm, then you have a certain amount of time after the notice, and then after that, the city will shovel it for you if you don't. So that's the process. So the sooner you get the information to the city about that the sidewalk hasn't been shoveled, the quicker you're going to get a response.
Who's phone is that?
Damn kid, probably one.
And just to clarify, when you say the city will shovel for you, you don't mean for free, correct?
Right.
Just, just...
No, no, no. We charge them. We give them an extra special charge.
Yeah.
To encourage them to do it themselves, or find someone to do it for them. But it's still, you know, we have to go through that. We have to mail the notices, we have to wait for it, then after that, then we have to send someone out to do the work and...
No discounts on the snow shoveling?
No. And then you get, then we have to send a bill out and go through the process of, nobody really wants us to do this. I mean, it used to be that we were cheap enough that people wanted us to do it. Nowadays, that's not the case.
So what about the letter in there about the dredging, or potential dredging?
That's an issue you guys could put on the agenda and bring up and discuss. I mean, it's, it wouldn't be out of place, I don't think. I think the last time we dredged it was about 20, 25 years ago.
Okay. That's all I had.
Figure it out, use this Cantabres machine here. Council business. Item A, the tavern operator's license. Misty, would you read those, please?
Rochelle Reels and Gerinder Carr.
And do we have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, go ahead and call the vote, Misty, please.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Krikovich?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Item B, public hearing, special assessment on East Lake Park Place, street reconstruction project. Do we have a... We have a... Misty, would you read that public notice?
The notice that I published in the paper?
Yeah.
Okay. Notice of public hearing on special assessments for public improvements in Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Notice is hereby given that the governing body of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, has declared its intention to exercise its police power in accordance with Section 66.0703 stats to levy special assessments upon property within the following described assessment district for benefits conferred upon the properties by the improvement of the following street and the installation of sidewalk, curb, and gutter thereon, assessment district. All property fronting upon both sides of the following streets or portions of streets, East Lake Park Place, from its intersection with South Main Street to its intersection with Pinnacle Drive. A report showing proposed plans and specifications, estimated cost of improvements, and proposed assessments is on file in the municipal clerk's office and may be inspected there during any business day between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. You are further notified that the governing body of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, will hear all interested persons or their agents or attorneys concerning matters contained in the preliminary resolution authorizing the assessments and in the above described report at 7:00 p.m. on the 19th day of January 2016, City Council Chambers, 200 Water Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. All objections will be considered at this hearing and thereafter, the amount of the assessments will be finally determined.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to address the council in regards to this project? Please step forward, state your name and address, and sign in on the sheet, please.
Good evening. My name is Bob Arrow. I own the property on 123, addressed as 123 East Lake Park Place. It's an eight-family apartment complex, apartment building. And I just had some comments about the project and the cost. When looking at the perceived need and the practicality and the cost of the assessments, I'm kind of left scratching my head and asking some questions, particularly about the construction of the sidewalks, which of course impacts me on both sides of the road that never had a sidewalk before. And one, for the most part, is not in a residential area. I wonder about the seeming, I don't know, obsession or infatuation with having to have sidewalks everywhere in Lake Mills, and the cost of construction, and the ongoing maintenance for them. I personally don't see a need for, to have two sidewalks, the length of East Lake Park Again, that didn't have a need for sidewalks before. When driving that stretch, approximately 75% of the, in a mile length of sidewalk or road where the sidewalk would be, is in front of non-residential property, namely the DNR and the high school. I'm just wondering who's going to use these sidewalks? And do we need to have two sidewalks? Sidewalk on each side, I just don't understand that. I'm not sure if there's a concern that one of the sidewalks is going to wear out, or we're going to... The cement is going to just kind of disappear, or what? And I've looked at, in Lake Mills, there are a number of streets in Lake Mills that do not have sidewalk, and/or have sidewalk only on one side. A portion of Main Street, south of East Lake Park Place, has sidewalk on one side only. And the residents on that side seem to be doing fine. I'm wondering, is it a safety need? Is that why we're having the sidewalks put in there? Have there been any motor vehicle or pedestrian accidents that have occurred on East Lake Park Place in the last year or five years? Anybody have any records of that?
We're just here to listen.
Okay. Well, maybe it's a rhetorical question. Well, I personally live in a sort of a safe, well-maintained neighborhood, has no sidewalks. We have school buses, picking up and dropping off children, we have people going to and from work, school, and other activities. We have plenty of traffic in my neighborhood. It's not Lake, it's not Lake Mills. Everyday families and individuals walk or jog in the street, many with their dogs and young children. And, you know, it's just something that, you know, we've grown accustomed to. I'm just suggesting that if safety is an issue for the high school students, I think they could be required to walk directly west from the high school to Main Street where, you know, they have sidewalk the whole way. I'm also concerned about the cost impact of the whole project, but again, primarily the sidewalks, which impact me. I don't know if, again, I brought this up last time, but I just, you know, looked at it a little bit more closely. Existing sidewalk in Lake Mills, in many cases, is poorly maintained. I don't know if any of you have walked the Main Street sidewalk. It's in pretty tough shape. They're old. Many, many of the sidewalk pieces are cracked, they're uneven, tilted from one side to another, tilted from front to back. Some are raised up and not flush with the other sidewalks. And now we're proposing new sidewalk at the cost of $124,000, when existing sidewalk can't be properly or affordably maintained by the city. Now taxes for my property, and again, includes two other, this includes two other eight families, but it's going to be over $30,000 this year with the additional proposed assessment of $4,800. About a 20%, increase. Plus the additional cost of snow removal for the sidewalk. This obviously has a major impact on my small business. Yeah, I'm just concerned that these costs are just too easily passed on to the property owners. We, you know, we help pay for city service, services, we share in the cost of public employment to provide these services. It's been too often, in my experience, I'd heard municipalities say, "We know what's best for the city." And all these costs associated with this project get passed down. In my case, they get passed down to me and my tenants, who are going to, who will be impacted. And in the case of the DNR and the high school, directly to the taxpayer. I don't believe we need sidewalk on both sides of East Lake Park Place. I mean, it's just, I just don't see the need. I don't need, I don't think we need sidewalk in front of the DNR, or vacant wooded lot, which is west or east of the, of the DNR. Open fields on the other side of the road, or in front of outbuildings on school property. It just seems like a waste. And if any sidewalk is put in, I just, I think that the cost can be shared. If it's put on in one side, property owners on the opposite side could share in the cost. I'd certainly be willing to do that. Again, I don't really think it's necessary to have sidewalk. So I'm asking you that you reduce the cost and impact of this, you know, constructing the sidewalks by eliminating unnecessary amount of sidewalk and the resulting cost of maintenance that would be incurred by the city and property owners. So, ask for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, can I ask, really, why, why do we need sidewalk in, to that extent, in that degree?
Steve, you want to take that?
The city has selected to do sidewalk, particularly in this site, because of school issues. This is a connection between two significant residential areas. This is one of the areas we got the most complaints about not having sidewalks. We do sidewalks on both sides based on a lawsuit out of Slinger, where they shared the cost of doing it on one side, except that they didn't share the cost of removing the snow, and afterwards, it became an issue, and so they just went back and re-special assessed and put sidewalks in on both sides. It's, it ends up being an equity issue across the board in the eyes of the court, and so we put them on both sides. We find that the connections also reduce the amount of cross-traffic in odd areas on a street. So we have just historically stayed with sidewalks on both sides.
And why is there such inconsistency in terms of sidewalk? I mean...
Well, we do sidewalks based on projects. So when we do a full rebuild, we put them in, and so there are some areas that hadn't had them put in originally, where we come back in and do them. So like, when we annex South Main Street, there were no sidewalks there. So some people requested that we put in a sidewalk on the one side. It was done on a rural cross-section, so it's basically almost what was the bottom of the ditch. So the water went and sat on it and froze up and created all kinds of problems. On the other side, we didn't. Now, when we do the, when we rebuild the street in 2018, there will be sidewalks all the way to the south end of the city, around the curve, on both sides. Another area that we get complaints is Pinnacle. They don't want their, have their kids have to cross the street on Main Street to get to a sidewalk, to walk up to the high school, to cross the street. And that's been an issue on both ends of Pinnacle and Jefferson. So from that standpoint, we believe that sidewalks, particularly in this area with the schools, all three of them, it's a substantial issue.
Okay. All right. Thanks for your information.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll close the public hearing and go to item C, Resolution 16-03. Misty, if you would?
Resolution 16-3, final resolution levying special assessments, East Lake Park Place. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, held a public hearing at the Lake Mills Municipal Building, located at 200 Water Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, at 7:00 p.m. on the 19th day of January 2016, for the purpose of hearing all interested persons concerning preliminary resolution 15-43 and the report of the Public Works Director, the city's engineering consultant, and the city treasurer on the proposed public improvements consisting of street, curb, and gutter, and sidewalk, and the preliminary assessments against benefited properties. And the council heard all persons who desired to speak at the hearing. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, determines as follows. One, reports of the Public Works Director and Strand Associates, Inc., and city treasurer, copies of which are attached hereto incorporated herein, as if fully set forth herein, including the preliminary plans and specifications, a map of the assessment area, a spreadsheet showing the total cost of the project and the work to be assessed to each benefited property, a memo discussing the considerations under the city's special assessment policy that were made when determining the appointment of costs, the statement of benefits, and a schedule of assessments are adopted and approved. Two, the city clerk shall advertise for bids, but the work may not be commenced and the contract let prior to approval by the State Building Commission. Three, after approval by the State Building Commission, the contract may be let and the work commenced, and the city's engineering consultant shall supervise the construction of improvements in accordance with the report hereby adopted. Four, payment for the improvements shall be made by assessing the costs as shown on the schedule of assessments to the properties benefited as indicated in the report. Five, assessments shown on the report represent an exercise of the police power and have been determined on a reasonable basis and are hereby confirmed. Six, assessments for all projects, including the report, are hereby combined as a single assessment, but any interested property owner may object to each assessment separately or all assessments jointly for any purpose. Seven, assessment should be paid on or before October 1, 2016, with no additional charges or interest, except the principal amount of the assessment or thereafter to be placed on the real estate tax bill of the affected property, together with interest on the unpaid principal balance of the assessment. Said interest be calculated at the rate of 3% per annum, and the principal and interest payments may be paid in up to 10 yearly payments. Be it further resolved that the city clerk shall publish this resolution as a Class 1 notice in the assessment district and mail a copy of the resolution and statement of final assessment against the benefited property, together with notice of installment payment privileges to every property owner whose name and address appears on the assessment rule, whose post office address is known or can be reasonable, diligence be ascertained.
And do we hear... And do we, do we hear a motion of acceptance of 16-03?
It's a move.
And a second, please?
Second.
Discussion?
That's a third reading?
This is a resolution.
Resolution.
There's just one, right?
If not, Misty, would you call the vote, please? Oh.
Counsel?
It might be advantageous since the engineer and the assistant public works director are both here for them to explain the process that, that went into making the decisions about what was going to be charged and to whom.
Would you do that, please? Whoever feels lucky.
When, when public commenter, they better feel lucky.
Yeah.
Could you introduce yourself before you do that?
Uh, Duane Vandermiss, Assistant Director of Public Works. We started with some history on the street, looked at previous assessments that were done in this area, how the street was developed. Portions of the street was developed as part of both of the subdivisions on both sides, both on Meadow Ridge and the area by Lilac Lane. In some of those cases, there were, the street and the curb and gutter was constructed fully during those times. Not completely through the entire Meadow Ridge subdivision, but just to the east of Meadow Ridge Circle. In those areas, sidewalk was not installed, that was discussed. Sidewalk has not been installed on any portion of this street. So from the sidewalk perspective, the sidewalk is being assessed on this project. For the curb and gutter, the curb and gutter was installed in the two subdivision areas. So the area in between, which would be the area along the school site, along the DNR property, was not installed. There's portions in the Meadow Ridge subdivision that was not installed as full street reconstruction. Brandon is pointing, or Steve is pointing to those right now. So in those areas, the street and the curb and gutter is also being assessed. A prior assessment was conducted for 1,600 linear feet of the street back in... Vicky, do you have the year?
No.
I believe it was back, I, I can look through the data, but it's in the, back in the 70s. There was an assessment that was conducted for 1,600 little feet, linear feet of the street to the school district and to, at that time, the DNR. It was not owned by the DNR, but was owned by the federal government. The Fish and Wildlife Department. At that time, the school district paid their assessment for a portion of the street that was constructed at that time. Not to the width that is the standard, but that portion of that street. And that portion of that street that was paid by the school district is not included in this assessment. To be fair, they've already paid for that portion of the street already. At the time, there was a clause, and Vicky, I'll let you speak to this. The federal government denied the assessment, it did not pay the assessment at the time. So there was never an assessment paid for that portion of the street along the fish hatchery's property. At this time, we're looking to assess that portion of the fish hatchery property for the full width of that portion of the street.
And actually, the reason the federal government didn't pay their special assessment is that they were exempt from special assessments. And the law of special assessments is if a property owner is exempt for any of a number of reasons, that then the assessment that would have gone to that property gets paid for by the government that is making the assessment, i.e. the city of Lake Mills. And it was for the width of the street as it exists today to the center line. But you'll notice in the documents that you got, the street is actually going to be constructed to a wider width. So the fish hatchery property is being assessed for the entire width to the center line of not only the existing width, but the future width end of this project, where the school district is only being assessed for the additional width because they already paid their fair share. The city has a special assessment policy that in order to make it fair and on a reasonable basis, the, the council decided a long time ago to create a special assessment policy so that it handles, you know, what happens if somebody already was special assessed for something or a developer paid for the street? What happens then when it gets reconstructed? And the, the, in a nutshell, policy of the city has been, if it's already been paid for by the property owner, either through a special assessment or through being developed by a developer, where the assumption is whoever owns the property within that development has been paying for that public improvement in, in some form or fashion when they purchased the property. Those properties have already paid their fair share. So when a street is being reconstructed, they don't get dinged for it a second time. It doesn't mean the city couldn't do it, it's just that the city has chosen under its policy that it won't do it. And also, the city and its policy won't special assess for storm sewer. It's my understanding storm sewer is going to be in this project. The city also doesn't special assess if you're already being served by sanitary sewer and water and we're just replacing it, upgrading it, whatever. The city doesn't special assess you a second time. So the, some persons in this project are only paying for sidewalk, such as what you heard about tonight. Some persons are paying for sidewalk, curb and gutter. Some people are paying for the extra width of the roadway. Some people are paying for the entire width of the roadway to the center line. And it's all based on what happened previously, so that no one is being charged a second time, but that everybody is being charged their fair share at some time or another for putting in the infrastructure. And I can turn it back over to Brandon and, and Duane, if, if there's anything else.
A few other things to add, the, the extra width that she's talking about for the high school assessment. They were originally...
Here you...
Sorry, they were originally assessed for 12 and a half feet of asphalt. And this project will be 17 feet, so the difference is what they're being assessed for. And I believe they're assessed for 15 feet of base course. And so the, the base course under the pavement will be 17 feet as well. And so there's a little bit of difference that they're being assessed for the, the school district. I'm sorry, the high school, there's a school district property as well. Another thing that's kind of important on that graphic in my mind is the green corner credit areas. The city's special assessment policy has a 50-foot corner credit for properties on corners so that the extra length of being situated on a corner doesn't, you know, hurt unnecessarily compared to other owners who are not on a corner. Some properties, specifically the high school, they are on a corner way down at Pinnacle Drive, but in order to reduce the special assessment to the high school as much as possible, the, the 50-foot corner credit was applied for Pinnacle Drive was applied way at the west end of their property. Because that's, there was a full width of roadway there, curb and gutter and sidewalk, that all had previously not been special assessed. So that was a, a choice that was made to reduce the special assessment as much as policy, possible while following the special assessment policy to the high school. A few other things that might seem a little odd, just looking at the, the exhibit there. The sidewalk is assessed by right-of-way frontage of each parcel, not necessarily the exact location or the area of the actual proposed sidewalk. There are some areas in this project where the best location to put the sidewalk for drainage or grading, you know, restoration around it does not exactly follow the right-of-way line. And in some of those cases, a parcel would have more sidewalk square footage physically on it that's going to be actually built than if you put it right along the, the right-of-way line. And so we assess five feet wide times the right-of-way frontage, not the actual area of the sidewalk. And that was done to, you know, be as fair as possible to each parcel.
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding that once this project's complete, we're not going to have the water problem that we've had in the past on the, on East Lake Park?
Yes, this should solve some of the water problems. I mean, you never say it will totally resolve it, but the one apartment house where the water always flowed over from, first of all, the water will be captured and put in a storm sewer rather than dumped onto the street, which is what is currently happening. And then his, there'll be a driveway and a sidewalk that's raised up and then it'll drop down. So there'll be enough slope that, that there'll be a capture channel on the street that'll reduce the amount of water flowing down it. Now, you could have a big enough rain that they may get water, but it's, should substantially reduce the amount of water.
And the, the existing power poles that are on the, by the, the hatchery side, tho, those are going to stay in place?
Yeah, my understanding is yes.
Okay.
Running east and west.
Right. Uh, right by the fish hatchery fence. Yeah, those will stay in place.
Right.
We are, we are replacing the ones running north and south along the west side of the fish hatchery that, that's going underground.
The electric portion of the, the line that goes north and south is, is going underground as part of the electric project this year. The electric utility is in contact with cable and telephone in that area. They are also on that pole line. So it has not been determined whether that entire pole line will be completely removed or portions of it will, is pending the decision by the cable company and the telephone company. And that would be the line that, that's running north just to the west of Mr. Otto's property. One lot, actually it would be the next lot west of Meadow Ridge. Uh, just that lot line to the left there, yes.
So this power line is going underground, but the one that runs along the street here, that'll stay overhead.
Okay. I guess you could just throw the cable companies on the ground, that's where they put mine. Okay, any discussion or questions?
Mr. Scharr.
If not, Misty, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Scharr?
Yep.
The reason that the special assessment can be done lawfully under police powers is that each property is somehow specially benefited from the project.
Right.
And I'd like, while we're still talking about this tonight, it would probably be beneficial if our city engineer, Brandon Herbert, reads the seven-numbered listing of what he determined to be the special benefits to the, the properties fronting this project.
Okay.
Just so that's in the record.
Brandon, if you would?
Sure. Increased value to properties because people will find fully improved properties desirable. Installation of sidewalks provides added safety for children and adults walking within the neighborhood by providing an off-street hard-surface travel route. Installation of curb and gutter and sidewalk will eliminate existing roadside ditches and result in uniformly graded terraces that will promote better drainage surrounding and within the right-of-way. Uniformly graded implanted terraces should be easier to maintain than the existing roadside ditches and scrub forest slopes. Reduction in dust by eliminating unpaved shoulder areas. Increased parking access on surface areas rather than grass or unpaved areas. And driveway access will be provided for most parcels of budding East Lake Park Place.
Okay. Well, nobody likes to get charged for sidewalks, but I guess it happens, everybody goes through it. They did.
May I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I sat on earlier councils, as well as this council, and the city councils did want to fix Lake Park Place 10, 15, 20 years ago. And at that time, the school district was very concerned about the cost because, you know, they just don't have money coming out of their ears for things. And so they asked that we leave it go as long as possible and give them a chance to get the money together to pay for it. The reason that we're doing it right now and need to do it now is because when we do the South Main Street reconstruction, we have to have Lake Park Place done because it feeds into the South Main Street project. So it's, but the school district has known about it for probably 25 years almost that this was happening and it has given them a chance to come up with the money in their own escrow type of thing to pay for it. But, uh, yeah, we would have liked to have done it years ago and put the sidewalks in many years ago. People asked for it and we just couldn't do it because we felt we owed it to the school district to recognize their financial need.
Thank you, Diane. Good point. Any other comments or questions? If not, Misty, if you would, call the vote.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0?
NMD, Resolution 16-04. Misty, if you would?
Resolution 16-4, Resolution Supporting Amendment to 2009 Wisconsin Act 50 and to Support 2015 Assembly Bill 515. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills recognizes the benefits of the Clean Sweep Recycling Program to control the disposal and storage of potentially hazardous household, agricultural, business, electronic and pharmaceutical waste. And whereas the City of Lake Mills recognizes the benefits of increasing the recycling grants to responsible units of local governments for certain eligible recycling expenses. And whereas, in the Jefferson County Strategic Plan Citizen Survey, 84% of respondents said that the Clean Sweep Recycling Program is a very important service to county residents and was ranked fourth on the list of services residents wanted within the county. And whereas, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills recognizes the E-Cycle Wisconsin Program, which is supported by Wisconsin's Electronics Recycling Law, 2009 Wisconsin Act 50, and bans electronics such as TVs, computers and cellphones from Wisconsin landfills and incinerators. And whereas, Wisconsin Act 50 needs to be updated to address the current problem of CRT glass from older TVs and monitors made with leaded glass, which is hazardous to our environment and safety of our residents if, if disposed of improperly, along with future problem materials such as mercury lamps and flat-screen devices. And whereas, Wisconsin Act 50 establishes recycling fees payable by manufacturers based on the weight of covered electronic devices sold to households or schools in the state. And as a result of new electronic devices weighing less than older devices, the amount of recycling fee payable by manufacturers has been decreasing each year, while the cost for recycling has increased. And whereas, Jefferson County's cost for recycling TVs and monitors was $28,650.28 from July to October 2015. And whereas, Senator Mark Miller, in cooperation with the DNR, supports efforts to amend Wisconsin Act 50 to be fair to manufacturers, collectors and recyclers. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills supports amending 2009 Wisconsin Act 50 to address electronic waste recycle, recycling as described above and further supports Assembly Bill 515 to increase recycling grants. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to State Senator Scott Fitzgerald and Representative Joel Cleefish, requesting their support of the legislation.
Steve?
Betsy.
Betsy?
Uh, we received some emails from Jefferson County giving us information that they're looking at doing a similar resolution coming up soon at one of their, their board meetings. They're looking to get support. What's, what's happened is that we've received a decrease in funding for grants, which directly affects our citizens in the rates that they're paying for our recycling and refuse. So part of what they're asking for here is asking us to support a change and to get back some of that funding that we've lost. Another part of this is asking for support to change to the law because a lot of the devices that are being recycled aren't included in the current laws. So they're looking at updating the language in the current recycling laws to include some more of the devices that we're seeing that weren't even available back then or weren't a, a problem when this law was first coming out.
Gotcha. Very well, questions?
So how does this affect the individual then? Are we asking, I guess not we, is this asking that the state continues or gives bigger grants to local communities so the cost savings of recycling can be shared and the burden is lessened on the individuals?
Yes, um, what we're looking at is the funds that the state has for grants that are issued to the, the local municipalities for the recycling grants. That had been reduced and part of what they're asking for here is that that level be brought back up, which I believe was four million, I think they wanted added on, added back into what they had reduced the pot of money that they're using to award those grants.
What, what you're looking at Mike is, as far as from a, an individual standpoint is that you're not supposed to be putting these things into a landfill.
Right.
There's no other way to get rid of them other than the county to take them. The way the county was funding it was through the grants.
Right.
The manufacturers who produce these devices are paying to the state. Well, as, as the devices get smaller and smaller, they pay less and less, so they're trying to figure out how to balance the cost of the devices that were being produced. And some of them that were outside the scope of the original legislation and capturing those manufacturers too, to get them to pay in a, a fee that then is distributed to the locals to collect that and get them out of the, the landfill stream. So it's a benefit to county individuals from not having to pay the cost of picking up that recycling cost.
Just trying to run it through my head here as far as what, I'm assuming that's a cost that is added to our tax bills to manage that as a county asset. That's what we're talking about here.
Right now, the county doesn't, uh, put any taxes into it.
Okay, so this is basically, the county wants, they want the grants back, so they don't have to.
That's right.
Okay, gotcha.
And the, the money is, comes from a tax on, basically a tax on the manufacturers who produce it. That gets passed on to the people who buy it, but obviously in some form or fashion, we need a, a funding stream to dispose of these devices.
Right.
And what's the, what's the, um, the, you know, if we get this back, what's gonna be the, the, uh, the method of getting rid of, you know, for the, for the household? What does the household do?
It's the same as what we did when we donated to Clean Sweep. There are several locations.
They'll just have.
The bank of Lake Mills did several Clean Sweep programs here where you could drop it off and they'd haul it to sites.
Right, yeah.
The county has several old sites that are open on a regular basis. I go up to Watertown and drop mine off on a regular basis.
All right, any other questions, comments? Misty, if you would?
I we have a motion on that.
Oh, do we have a, uh, can I get a motion on that? For sixteen oh four?
Sure, so moved.
And a second please.
Second.
Sorry, keep me honest. Now would you call the vote?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Kirkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Recommendations for future agendas?
Um, I'd like to just address the public comment that was brought to us regarding the trees.
I don't think we can without.
Under future agendas.
Okay, okay, sure.
I think the request I heard, now I may not have heard it, is that they wanted some sort of meeting? Okay, was the meeting you wanted an informational meeting?
What I'm hearing is a lot of people, while you've made, um, past council meetings available, people aren't accessing them. Many, a lot of questions and comments, why, how come, what can we do? It seemed earlier on there were informational meetings, uh, that the residents of South Main.
Right.
Were invited to, well, this is, we feel the city might have impacted the city. Also, from some of the residents of South Main, that earlier questionnaires came
Right.
before full information was available. So they, um, turned in their questionnaires and then other information came, say regarding the bike lanes and sidewalk. Um, there's, there's an awful lot of, um, a lot of questions, a lot of people don't know what's going on. Tax payers of, of, the whole city is impacted. They have some sort of a fact finding question answer, I don't know. This is a very difficult topic, I understand that.
Well, the reason I asked is because it isn't a choice that the council is making. We're not choosing to cut down trees or destroy trees. We are putting in sanit- we're putting in sanitary sewer down the middle of the street and we're putting in water lines and we're putting in, I'm missing one, what made this missing?
Storm sewer.
Sew- yeah, and waters, uh, the, the regular sewer, the water sewer, the regular sewer and everything. When you do that, you rip up the street and you rip up the roots that are in the ground. And that's, we, I thought we had this pretty well answered for the, for the residents, but if you're.
We can, we can do a forum with the group. I mean, even if it's just, you know, staff, I don't know that.
Yeah.
At some point, they may wanna have to do with the council, but they may wanna sit down with staff and go over the issues first. And then they can discuss the topic with you at some future point, maybe, you know, at the council meeting.
Cause we had, how many meetings did we have on this?
Well, we've, we've had a lot.
Yeah.
But I, I understand that, that there's a lot of, there's a lot of information and that's, you know, we.
Well, September, October, we're both.
Yeah.
You, you, you have the report that Rob gave us. That's not, I, I don't know that a lot of people had that. You have what Jeremy wrote.
Put that on the website.
We can, we can sit down with them though and, and if they have specific questions related to it, we, they can start accessing the website, looking at it, and then they can sit down in a staff meeting. We can hold a staff meeting where we can go over the issues and, and discuss what we see and.
And explain why.
Right.
It's not a choice, it's just, we went through this in North Main too. It was the same thing and so at that time, we let some trees stand and later they all died. And we had to cut them down on our dollar. If we do it at the beginning, the state pays for it, which means you don't. Now, what I'm trying to say is I agree with Steve, I think I'm more than willing to have Steve set up something and I would be glad to come. We can't all come because then we have a quorum for the, for the council. But, um, you know, I would be glad to come and sit on that and maybe somebody else would too. But, please understand that this isn't something we pulled out of a hat. We have been studying this, we know from experience what happens. We have talked to all the landowners and yes, trees belong to everybody. But when we do a street project, it's only the residents of the street that are considered noticeable people, is that, you know, is that right, Vicky? How, am I, what am I saying wrong?
Well, you know, I, this, this is a, this is a subject near and dear to my heart cause I don't like to see trees cut down. And I can assure you that we've been working on this for how many years now?
Three.
Three years now. And I can assure you that nobody has fought harder for those trees than I have personally. Uh, going toe to toe with the, with the Department of Transportation. Um, and, uh, you know, I, it, it, just really to know avail because it's a no-win situation. No, no matter how you do it, it's a no-win situation. But I think we can have a, certainly I think the staff should, should get involved and, and, and have a, have a meeting with the concerned citizens and you should be able to bring out your, your frustrations.
We'd like to have a forum that starts later when those people get home from work. The DOT meetings started at five. I mean, not that many people working late till, like they used to.
Yeah.
And people don't get home till six. So it would help if the informational meeting started later so everybody could get the facts.
Sure.
We're, we're used to starting at seven, if that's okay.
Yeah. But five o'clock, that's really early for anybody coming from Madison or Milwaukee.
We agree.
So that that's where people are missing the information. We're not doubting that you put in a lot of hours on this. We would just like the up-to-date information shared.
And you have to realize that it, it's potentially changing on a day-to-day basis. I mean, we just, we just spent a full hour discussing potential issues tonight that could change the whole thing again.
And if it could've changed, I, I guarantee you, we would've changed it. And we're still looking at it, it hasn't, it's not final, but unfortunately the, you know, the, the, uh, the, the tree situation is, is dire. I mean, unfortunately it is, but, you know, understand that we have done steps to try to mitigate that impact as much as we can. And we have done that from several years ago when we first had the meeting with the, with the streetlights. Um, you know, it, it's, it's gonna be a change in, in what South Main looks like. We are doing our best to try to mitigate that as much as possible. We all know the impacts, I mean, I live, you know, one house away from South Main and, uh, you know, it, you know, I, I love that view with the, with the shade coming down, you know, I, uh, but, and, and, uh, I think my first words when the state said that they're gonna, they're gonna have to come down, no way in hell. But I was overridden and, and, uh, we, we did everything, we brought in a senator. Uh, we did everything we could, um, but there's.
Mike, do you have the concept drawing yet or no?
Yeah, I'll be, not with me.
Not with you, okay.
But I'll, basically I'll put the, the concept drawings out for them to view and then we'll go over the, Rob's tree list and then we'll start going through a construction project.
And why don't you put Rob's, why don't you put Rob's diagn- Rob's our arborist, he's our, he's our park director. He's also an arborist and he did a, an in-depth, um, you know, s- survey on the trees on South Main. And, um, it, it's available and you, you, can you put that on the, uh?
I have extra copies, I'll give you one.
Okay, if you wanna get a copy, see Steve. Yeah, but the, the, what I'm talking about now is, is the, um, inventory of the trees that are there now and what their conditions are and what their outlook is, even if we didn't do anything. So, um, that's kinda eye-opening, so.
What is it about there?
I guess what I'm asking for is, is there's a group of like here in Maine, but as I say, there's over four hundred people. Four hundred and fifty people, um, that have all these questions. Where is he, where does he need to be?
We'll get it, that, that'll be set up and, and, um, we'll have the staff and the experts available. And, um, I know you're not gonna get, you're not gonna get the satisfaction, but at least you'll, you'll get the answers that you're looking for. And, and that's certainly not unreasonable.
The report you have in your hand now shows, it's about, isn't it almost thirty percent of the trees that are going, are going.
That's more than that.
No, about the, about the ash.
Oh, yeah.
It's about thirty percent, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, about thirty percent of the trees that are going down would be going down no matter what because the ash trees have to be removed if we're going to, um, keep ahead of the ash bore. So, that's part of it. And a lot of people don't even realize that that's a big part of it. So.
Okay, well, well, that'll, that'll happen. And, and just, and then in the meantime, look, look on the city's website. Um, the, the, uh, the conceptual drawing or, or photograph will be on there. And, um, we'll make every effort to keep the citizens informed. As far as I'm concerned, yeah, it's city, yeah, it's public information, yeah, you can do it. Mm-hmm, absolutely. You bet.
And, um.
And you know what, I, take a look at the, the concept drawing, actually I think they went through a lot of trouble to make sure some, the trees that would stay there make a canopy and then there's the flowerings down the middle, but, I mean, I think we've also made every effort, not just to take trees down, but to give it a really nice look when we're done. It will change, it will be different. Um, and I told Rudy earlier, I said, my wife and I drove all the way to Holland, Michigan to see tulips. And we kinda took that concept to a canopy of, of flowering, different colored trees down South Main and I, you know, it, we're not trying to get rid of trees, we want them there. And so when you start looking at the pictures of what it can look like, I don't wanna disrupt that either, so.
And, and, and any trees that are really outside of, of the sidewalk, that even some of them that have hearts on it, they're not, they're not, uh, they're not on the list.
Yeah, so.
Yes, sir, Peter.
Is this, um, um, concept on the city site?
It will be.
Yes, yes. Yeah, they took, engineers took a photograph and, and.
Cause it's under the agenda and that's what I was just looking at, I think it's a December.
We've only seen what DOT had.
Correct.
Yeah.
New information for us.
Sure.
Now, it was on the Main Street Facebook page, but it's, it was also on our, I think it was on our, um,
I did not see it on the, on the, um, on our homepage.
It, well, it was on the council agenda the night that we approved it.
It wasn't easy to find.
Yeah, no, that's why I was saying, uh, we'll, we'll have to move it to the.
Move it so it has its own.
It's right on the front page.
Yeah, make it easy to find. I, I do think you'll like it. And, and it, actually, you know, when, when I looked at it, cause I, you know, I, I was thinking of a, you know how you drive through Waterloo on the, on kind of the north end where they rebuilt, uh, the, the street there, kinda like that? I'm thinking, oh, no. But, uh, I saw that and it, it, it made me feel better, so.
And this meeting that we're talking about will be a seven o'clock meeting? That we could do it at seven o'clock?
I can, we can do it seven, seven-thirty, whenever it works for them. We just have to find a date, Tuesdays are terrible for me. This is, this is the.
That guy's letter, do you wanna talk about?
Oh.
You put it up.
So, I guess if
Not a problem.
We can get your woman.
Staff can set this up, we won't have to.
There we go. All right, this is an actual photograph with, uh, the flowering trees superimposed on, on the, uh.
But a lot of the trees in the
Behind.
Big trees, they're still there.
Those are all real trees.
Down that road that will be there.
They aren't being taken down, it's only the ones that are in the tree lawn.
Yeah.
There are a couple that would be in yards, but that's.
They're right on the sidewalk.
Right, and the property owner gets to make the decision. And so what the state'll do is they'll come and say, we'll pay you to take down that tree and replace it, or you can keep it. But you have to realize that the chances of it dying within the next five years are very high. That's on an individual basis, there will be someone who will come and negotiate T, T, what we call TLEs, temporary limited easements. And because the construction generally exceeds the, the right-of-way, so they need to be able to get their equipment over and off and on. You have to realize that there are all kinds of water services and sanitary sewer services and storm laterals and all that kinda stuff that'll be going in here. So they have to be, they have to get up onto the property.
And it's about the size of the trees that would be put in?
Yes.
Yeah, they're gonna be larger trees, um, so they're, they're not, we're not gonna put in any little shrimpy ones in there. And if you look, um, you recognize the Main Street, the, on, on the right-hand side, that's the fish hatchery building. Uh, just in front of the bicyclist.
Right here.
So that's, that's kinda what we're looking at, you know, that's the big picture, so.
When, when you say large trees, they're large for flowering trees. They're not gonna be like the big trees in the background. We do provide the homeowners an opportunity to take a tree and plant in their own yard that would be a bigger canopy tree. So, we would pay for that, but because we're planting trees in the right-of-way now rather than none, um, we just give them the tree and then they, they plant it, they maintain it. No, that's a, that's a parking lane. With the, the design of the street is, there's a bike lane, uh, the south lane, the north lane, a bike lane and a parking lane. Currently, we have a north and south lane and then two parking lanes. So we've eliminated one parking lane, and that's what's incorporated into the bike lanes.
And that was what the letter was for that went out as a survey?
Right, was to determine if they wanted two parking lanes or not. And they had the option of two parking lanes, one parking lane, or none. And then that affected the width of the street. They voted to take one parking lane, realizing that the state was requiring the bike lanes. The conversation at the time was, is how would that affect the trees? But after looking at the total impact of all the construction, all the construction engineers and foresters and, and anybody who's used to dealing with this is saying that the, the tree survival rate in this area would be zero to almost, to very limited. And so from our standpoint, a, a number of them were already diseased, dead or, or dying, or a type of tree that needed to be removed. So it was, we felt it was beneficial to take all the state money, replace as many trees as possible as quick as possible. So what the plan kind of was, was to start removing the trees as quickly as possible, and then we could start saying, okay, we're taking this tree out, we'll give you a tree to plant back here, and then as soon as the project's done, we get all the trees back in the right-of-way as quick as possible, and then we have as many trees replacing what's there. We also went with an antique-style streetlight to kind of create a, between the flowering trees and the streetlight to create a view that was appealing and, and created kind of an artistic flavor to the street and, and created a, created a place that people would want to come view. So, yeah, it would, it would be kind of like, we kind of took it like the blossoming cherries in Washington, and maybe not that great, but, you know, people would come to see a mile and a half of, of flowering trees in the spring. It, it would create a unique view.
Okay. I don't want to cut this off, but we need to...
Yeah, that, so staff will work on picking a date and...
Just, just get with me.
And then...
Set up a date.
Who, who will, how do we get the message to the, the group on, we're not hooked up to their site?
Well, you, you, yeah, you can confer with the staff and...
Just, just email me or call me or do whatever you want. We'll get a date set up, and from there, I, I take care of these guys and you contact your people and we'll get them there. I assume we can hold it in this room here, if that's all right with you? If we meet in here? Because if you have a lot of people who want to show up, I'm assuming that this room has got the best seating.
Bless you.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
All right, if nothing else, I'll adjourn the meeting and we'll go forth. I'll sign papers.
Sounds good.